That's a whole nother story.
Good evening. There you go. All right, so I'll call to order a roll call.
Evenin'.
Hi.
Matt.
Here.
Brayden.
Here.
McCray.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Here.
All right, it gives us a form of what you're doing.
.....................................................................
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the addendum that was given to your side? So moved.
Second.
Miller. Hi. Brad.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Evenin'.
Hi.
Brayden.
Hi.
McCray.
Hi.
Hi.
Paul McCollum. Next would be the preliminary budget presentation by John. It's everybody's favorite time of year. Listen to the text on your right. All right, so as I worked through this spring trying to create a 2019-2020 budget, there were a couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention in terms of assumptions that I used or facts that I knew about. For example, the medical HMO decreased 4.5%. Our medical PPO and high deductible health plan both increased 7.9%. The dental PPO had an increase of 0% or stayed flat. Our workers' compensation and property casualty increased. Workers' compensation increased 9.33%. Property casualty increased 5%. A lot of that increase was from the addition of the solar panels. We have an increase from CDAL of 4.67%. A transportation increase of 6% with Durham. We also had, as you all know, a very cold winter, so our natural gas went up a little bit and was over budget this year, so I tried to pad that a little bit more for next year. But also fortunately, we're starting to see some of the savings from the solar panel, and we've seen electric go down 30 to 40% in the buildings that had electric. And we're looking forward to a really good summer because I feel like that number may actually go down even more. For revenues, we have evidence-based funding. It's really important to note, this is really hard to predict. We've heard rumors that we may not know until October when, what kind of money that we're going to get, which is fun because you have to approve a budget in September. So we'll figure it out and hope that the rumors are wrong. And it's also really important because we've always been hovering between tier one and tier two. And just to put that in perspective, in fiscal year 18, we were tier one, and that was 400,000 of additional funds. And then this fiscal year, fiscal year 19, we were, I'm sorry, that year we were tier two. This year, we're tier one, and that gave us 898,000 more dollars. So it can be a pretty big swing for our budget.
But to be clear, we'll never backslide, right, from where we were?
Yes.
Regardless of what tier we're in.
Correct.
Never get less than the year.
So, for example, that first year, we got 11.2 million as a base, and then we got 400,000 in additional tier funds. So that made 11.6 million. That became the new base for fiscal year 19, which they added the 898,000 to. So unless the state starts prorating things again to jinx us.
Didn't they move like an extra 375 million in this year's budget?
They have, most, very recently.
Theory.
Absolutely. We also have an operating levy revenue increase of $742,000 or an increase of about 2.67%. We have, and we're also predicting to finally receive those SREC income and inverter rebates for the solar panels. And then finally, I also predicted some increase in interest returns, but a very modest increase. The market is now, just in the last week, starting to show some signs of worry of going down in interest rates and long-term investments, so we'll see what happens with that. But I'm predicting a slight increase in interest.
What was the reason for the increase in the work account?
I'm actually still working with our insurance cooperative on that because we've actually experienced lower claims, and we haven't added dramatically to staff. But based upon their calculation, they still raised our rate. So I'm still, I don't, I'm still working with them to try to figure that out. I have somebody coming out to talk to us about that more.
And John, what's your assumption around the levy? Is that, again, sort of our next levy?
This is actually
The last year?
The 2018 levy, so I haven't
Right, it's year here. Yeah, okay.
Any other? So starting off in our education fund, we have our levy for, our levy dollars, as we said, it's about a 2.66 or 2.67% increase. That reflects the CPI at 1.9, and then we had a pretty substantial year for new construction in 2018 of 4.2 million. To put that in perspective, we normally see about 700 or 800,000 on average. So that was a really good year for us, thankfully. Other local revenue, we're predicting to go up a little bit thanks to the new tech fee and, but otherwise, we're predicting those other fees to be flat or even down. Evidence-based funding, again, since we didn't kind of know what's going on, we predicted conservatively $250,000 in new funds. For other state, the only reason why that number went down is one of the grants we had budgeted for previously in, for fiscal year 19, was actually a grant that got rolled into evidence-based funding. So we never received funding for that this year, and I just completely cut it out of the budget because we're not going to get any more. It's part of evidence-based funding. And also, we noticed special ed private facility went down. And then finally, we have federal, which is also hard to predict, but we're going to see some changes with IDEA. Instead of IDEA funds going to CDAL and then we get whatever CDAL cuts to us, the money's going to come directly to us, and then we cut a check to CDAL. So we're still working through how all that's going to look and affect our budget. But we are also predicting, predicting an increase in our low-income population, which would then obviously increase things like our Title I funding and other federal grants. For expenditures, we have salaries. This is a prediction from the increased FTE from our evidence-based funds. We had approved several things back in October of this fiscal year. Things like two district techs, two coaches. Trying to think of some of the other ones. We had a one and a half increase in nurses. So we had quite a few positions that we increased thanks to the additional evidence-based funding formula. And then there's also the increase due to salary raises. Benefits, we saw the medical and dental increase, and we've also, as a result of salary increases and the increase in FTE, we're going to see some pension increases as well, which is expected. Purchase services went up slightly more than CPI. This is because of the increased software for things like one-to-one, and again, that was covered under evidence-based funding, and some of the additional support software that we approved this year, things like RIVs and Safe Schools. And then finally, the insurance that we mentioned previously. Supplies is the one that went up dramatically. But again, this is from Chromebooks and Curriculum, which we approved this year, and again, that money was out of evidence-based funds, the additional money that they gave us this year. Capital outlay, I kept at relatively close to CPI. And tuition, again, is one of those areas that keeps going up, unfortunately. We keep having higher and higher special education tuition increases, both in terms of a percent that they're charging us and in terms of enrollment. Non-capitalized goods, I kept at CPI. You'll see overall, the story for the ed fund is our expenses are going up quicker than our revenue. So we're predicting a deficit for fiscal year 20 at this point of $577,000. In the operation and maintenance fund, we have the increase in the levy. We slightly increased the levy this year due to a lot of the parking lot projects that we have coming down the pipeline and the Meadowview roof and several other roofs that we have in the near future. We're actually working with Wold, our architect, right now to come up with a long-term plan for at least the next five years of major capital projects that need to be done. So we'll actually be talking more about that later tonight, but we'll have a formal recommendation at the next board meeting. Other local, we're predicting to go up pretty dramatically. That is entirely from the solar rebates and credits and things like that. For expenditures, our salaries, it's literally just whatever the raises were going to be. We have our medical dental increase, just like in the ed fund. Our purchase services, we have going up as well. This is in due, this is going up slightly faster than CPI. Again, it was due to CDAL raising their operation and maintenance levy on us. For supplies, we actually have that going down, even though our natural gas is going to be going up, just to try to make sure that we can survive another really bad winter. Our electricity usage is going down dramatically. So thankfully, I'm happy to report that we're already starting to see, even though the last building wasn't finished until April 1st, we're already starting to see reductions in our electric usage. Capital outlay, this has gone up. The only reason why this went up is, last year, we did a lot of our capital projects out of the capital projects fund. We'll probably still move this to the capital projects fund, but a lot of the money that we're using, I chose to mark it here because the money that we're using here is from our operation and maintenance fund balance. So it would look, it would make sense of why we're going to be drawing down on our ed fund balance. So as you'll see tonight, we're hopefully approving paving at the middle school at Park at Prairie View. And theoretically, at the very end of next fiscal year, we'll start working on a Meadowview roof pending board approval. And then other, this is where we structured our debt certificates. We borrowed $4 million in debt certificates to help pay for solar. We worked with State Bank of the Lakes to structure our debt repayments so that as soon as we received the solar rebates, we could then turn around and make a massive payment on those debt certificates so we'd pay less interest during the life of the loan. So that's why that jumped so dramatically. And then non-capitalized goods, we just kept going at CPI. So overall, we're projecting a deficit of 644,000. This is almost entirely due to all the paving that we're planning on doing, and this is why, if you look at the bottom, we've had a fund balance of over 100%. We've been accruing that because we knew we had all of these parking lots and all of these roofs coming down the pipeline. So now we're starting to draw some of that down. Debt service is really straightforward. This is levied by Lake County, so there's not much, I don't have a lot of control over this piece. Fortunately, the way we've structured our debt with several refundings in 2012, 13, and 14, I believe, or 14 and 15, we have a pretty flat payment. So we get a certain amount every year, year over year from the county, from our taxpayers, and then we turn around and make that payment out. The only increase you'll see is the increased interest from having a really good economy over the last year. Transportation fund, so this is again, talking about that lag time in the levy. So in fiscal year 18, we had actually levied 1.3 million. And then in, I'm sorry, in fiscal year 17, we levied 1.3 million, and fiscal year 18, we levied 1.1 million. So I wasn't here at the time, but, so I don't know why, but Chris reduced the transportation levy by $200,000, and that's where you're starting to see those payments coming in lower later. I'm trying to raise it back up because we have, as you can see at the bottom, we're projecting an actual negative fund balance in the transportation fund by the end of next year. So I'm trying to anticipate that and increase our levies to hopefully avoid that. Other local revenue, we're predicting increased field trip collection money. Other state, we're predicting a decrease in state reimbursements. This is largely due to the fact that in this last year, we had, we had actually, thanks to Kim Frost, our former transportation coordinator, we had cut several routes, so we were paying less. And if you're paying less, you get reimbursed less, so. And then finally, for federal, this is just based on CPI, depending upon for grant allocations for some of our summer school programming. Speaking of former coordinators, you'll see salaries and benefits have gone down. We've returned our registrar to be a half-time registrar, half-time transportation, according to the funding, so that's why it wasn't a complete removal. For purchase services, again, it was about a 6% increase for Durham, but again, a big driving factor is our special education. With more outplayed students, we have more transportation we have to pay for for them to make it to their schools. And then finally, for supplies, I actually reduced supplies this past year. Looking at, because of decreased routes, we have to buy less gas. Gas prices have generally been low for a little while now, so we're predicting to have to spend less money in gas, basically, for the next year. And our IMRF and Social Security Fund, we increased the levy here to try to make up for some of the pension payments that we're going to have to make. Other local income, it's just interest on investments, nothing. We had a really good year, so I bumped up our interest investment account accordingly. And for expenditures, you'll see it's pretty close to CPI or a little bit more, and that's just because, again, for FTE and for raises, as they're just a percentage of what our salaries are. Capital Projects Fund, this is, we're on here to make you aware of some of the things that happened. We borrowed 4 million, and then there was 15,000 in interest. I've reduced it, we're obviously not getting another $4 million in debt certificates, thankfully. And then with us completely drawing down this fund, we're not going to get a lot of interest revenue in an account that has zero dollars in it. So we just have a prediction of about $5,000, which, on the grand schemes of things, is pretty inconsequential. But reduced developer fees, we're seeing a little bit less development. And then capital outlay, that was the balance of what we had to pay Performance Services for our solar project this year. So with this, we're now completely drawn down in our capital projects fund. For our working cash fund, our levy, again, we reduced our levy. The point of reducing our levy in this fund is, this is a fund that is pretty difficult to move money out of, so we reduced our levy in our working cash to try to increase places like our transportation fund and some of the other funds that are predicting deficit spending. Again, it's $12,000, as you can see, so it's not, there's no cavalry to come and save the day in the ed fund, but at least it's something and it helps. For other local, we again increased it, just looking at how much money we've received in interest income this year compared to what we've budgeted, I felt pretty comfortable giving it a pretty substantial boost. We've been very conservative in how we estimate our interest, and I actually feel, depending upon what the market does, feel confident we can hit 30,000 in that fund. Other transfers, we're talking tonight about a transfer in the working cash fund now to cover the solar projects, so that's on here for fiscal year 19, just as a reference. The TORT fund is our, kind of our insurance and our legal fund. Last year, we levied 163,000. I reduced that levy this year to 149,000, the biggest reason being we have a fund balance of 102%. So I wanted to, again, try to help offset some of the deficits in other funds. Again, it's not much, it's $20,000, but every little bit helps. For other local, again, we had pretty conservative estimates for our interest. We've been doing really well, so we're increasing our interest projections for this fund as well. And then for expenditures, we're going to see an increase to 172,000. This is almost exclusively property and casualty insurance. And again, the biggest driving factor of that is our new solar panels, so that's why it went up at the rate it went up. So overall, our operating funds, just wanted to kind of aggregate it. Again, this is our operating fund, so it doesn't include our debt service account, and it doesn't include our working cash fund. So overall, you're seeing our levy went up, again, about that 2.7%. Other local income went up pretty dramatically, but again, that's just largely due to the solar income that we're predicting to come in for the rebates and a new technology fee. Evidence-based funding, we, again, just were conservative with a $250,000 estimate. The other state, again, just we rolled TPI, which was an English-language grant, into our evidence-based funding, so we weren't getting it anymore. So that's why there's the reduction in the budget. And then our federal, we have going up due to our IDEA changes and our low-income increase. And then expenditures, as you see, again, the story is the salaries are going up, benefits are going up. Purchase services went up faster, and that's largely due to, again, evidence-based funding purchases, but software, district insurance that we have to talk about, and, again, a dramatic special education increase in costs. Supplies went up dramatically, but again, evidence-based funding covered it, and it was for Chromebooks and Curriculum. It's the big driving factor, the increase in supplies, otherwise it was largely just increasing at CPI. And then we have our capital outlay, which is, again, just our conversations about the paving, we're talking about tonight for the paving at Prairie View, the middle school and at Park, and then the other, just the large increase in there is for the solar debt payments. So overall, we're projecting a deficit of 1.3 million in our operating funds. If you take out the summer construction projects that we're talking about, we're projecting a deficit of $770,000. Overall, with everything together, we're projecting about a deficit of $1.2 million. Any questions?
I was wondering if you couldn't, if you wouldn't, please provide some commentary on your thoughts on the overall health, financial health of the district at this point? Any risks? Any opportunities?
For opportunities, I know that we've been looking at, one question that we broached with Performance Services is, right now, the way the laws are structured, if you add solar panels onto an existing property, it can only produce enough electricity to be 110% of what the building normally uses. The question we had is if the district were to, say, buy property, because every year we get something called the Green Book from the county, which says, hey, here's all the tracts of land in your district that are for sale due to back taxes. And some of them are pretty substantial-sized lots, and some of them are relatively cheap for how much land that you can get. So we've started scratching, just started scratching the surface at, what would it look like to buy a plot of five acres and put a solar field on that? What kind of rebates would we get? How would that work since it's not attached onto a building? So in terms of opportunities, that's one of the things that we've already started looking into.
Did I hear you preface that comment by saying that each site can only produce 110% of what that building normally uses?
When they designed the project, it can only produce 110% of the electricity. So for example, part of the middle school was, they were actually going to put more on the middle school, but when they ran the calculation, more panels, but when they ran the calculation, they realized they would be exceeding that number, so they had to reduce the number of panels on the middle school.
If it's attached to a building? If it's attached to the building. So they don't, I wonder what that, I always try to think of what policy is trying to incentivize, right? What are they trying to incentivize by doing? So they just don't want people in the electricity generating business?
I think it's ComEd limiting what people can do outside of the grid.
Or successful lobbying is what, why that policy exists.
I think they might try to tell you, if I was playing ComEd's devil's advocate, I think they're trying to say, if you have a building that goes from pulling in, you know, 100 megawatts a year, and then goes into shooting out 400 megawatts, that would be really hard on the infrastructure, the electric infrastructure around it. We actually ran into that, because we tried to max it out at the middle school, we actually ran into that issue where they had to change out a transformer for us. So I think part of their thing is they want to avoid the one-year jump of like, oh, my gosh, we suddenly changed a whole amount of electrical infrastructure.
Yeah, but there, I mean, there are
Just playing devil's advocate, I'm not a, I don't
No, I mean, that's part of it too, but there are also limits on what consumers can do. I mean, like you can't, we can't store all the energy, we couldn't put in a series of batteries to store all the extra energy. We wouldn't be allowed to do that. So it's just, that's just where the market is now, that's all.
So for revenue, that's the one thing that we've been looking at. In terms of dangers or pitfalls, I honestly feel pretty confident. I don't think there's, we've been doing really well from a facilities perspective. I'm not anticipating any roofs to fall off or any major boilers to blow, wish there was wood around to knock on, thank you. So I feel pretty confident that what we have is sustainable in the sense of, we're not going to have a big swing in what we're spending. I'm a little concerned about the deficit spending, but to be honest with you, we were really conservative with evidence-based funding. So theoretically, if the state comes back after putting 375 million and we're in tier one, we could be a surplus, it would be really close. But overall, I feel confident that we'd be okay.
And our fund balances are adequate. We have reserves in place to weather, you know, like worst-case scenario situations.
Absolutely. And that's part of the, as we go to the O&M fund, we had that huge amount that was sitting in there of over 100%, and now we're starting to draw down on that. So even when things happen like, like happened this summer, where it's, we weren't planning on doing the middle school parking lot, but just due to the winter, it just deteriorated so quickly. Fortunately, we have the fund balance to make that sudden change of like, okay, we've got to do GMS this, this summer. So I feel very confident that we'd be able to weather anything that happened.
If, if we bought five acres and put in a solar field, what would that power?
So that's the question that we had for Performance Services, is technically, if we bought five acres, for example, not trying to say I've looked that far into it, but there's five acres for sale next to the Washington Street train station that have been abandoned. If we bought something like that, it's technically not attached to a building, so is there then no, no restriction on what we can put in there? And if so, does that mean we still get rebates? Do we not get rebates? What would be the cost-benefit analysis of, you know, an upfront investment like that? But would it then pay off over the course of the life of, of the solar panels?
Right, but if we put in solar panels, what? Where would the electricity go? I mean, would we, would we
It'd go into the grid.
Just go into the grid, and we'd sell, just sell it back to the grid?
We'd just get the dollars.
So it's just a revenue generator?
Absolutely.
So we become in the electricity generation business?
CCSD 46 and electric.
See the logo now.
Just trying to, this is part of my philosophy of turning over every single stone.
If that's a genuine opportunity and the numbers are right, then
It's worth going down that path.
John, do you also, I don't want to create work for you, but I'm wondering if you've taken a look at kind of the next five to seven years best-case scenario in terms of debt falling off, like when those, because being newer to the board, I know we've talked about it a little bit, but, you know, if you've got when certain things start falling off and what the impact is, I'd be really interested in just understanding that longer-term picture as well, if it's something you already, you've already got somewhere.
I do actually have that somewhere. Part of it was for the negotiations, and part of it was just in general, my own good knowledge. I will say, I'm happy to present it. If that's something that you want, I'm happy to bring it back. As always, I'll just put the asterisk by it of, every year you go out, it gets a little bit less certain of what's going to happen, but I'm happy to bring that back.
Just to, you know, as we think about, I'd love to make those short decisions just with that bigger picture in mind to reveal.
Absolutely. I know that's something that I've, I've talked a lot with Ellen about, is how do we start making better financial presentations in terms of, how do I give you information longer term? And actually, that was part of what started us on talking to Wold about how do we create a, because the last time we updated this was 2014. So it was like, okay, well, a good starting point to give you the information you need is let's start with O&M. How are our buildings look? And then we can start looking at some longer-term financial projections as well. So that's something that, as a personal goal of mine, we'll be handling in the next year to give you guys some better financial reporting. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda are board reports. Anybody have anything for the board? Good news, bad news?
I just found a grant, it's called now a grant, international grant for community There's two possibilities, if we apply, we can submit one application by July 22nd and apply and win one of two things. The first is to be at one of three host sites around the Eleanor and then talk about intention of buying. The second is to be part of a cohort, and we would win one of those if we applied and if we, so we met, we met and talked a little bit about what would be a design challenge that would be interesting to show something kind of long-term and then also creating a dashboard so that people could plug in intentionally and plug out when they're ready, so they know that what they're doing is actually going into a larger plan. So just wanted you to know what that is about. And if-
Waiting for the information back. So I've made contact with, with the agency that's supporting this, and I want to make sure that we qualify, and then we can go from there to apply.
I had Ellen pass on an email regarding a conversation that I had with Mayor Taylor regarding Hager, just a little bit of a follow-up with that. I did ask him to kind of give us some, I guess, hard and fast numbers of what proposals they were looking at for that, so they brought it back, so then if we have another discussion, then at least that was there. But, you know, I sent you the email regarding the coverage, and I think you had a similar conversation with Mike Ellis as well. So that's where that sits at this point, so there's actually no action, I'm just making sure everybody knows that. That's what I basically asked them to do, is if they're going to come back with us, then to actually give us a formal, some sort of dollar amount or presentation or proposal for it, because otherwise, there's no offense in us. Until they give us something to discuss, there's nothing really to discuss. And graduation, I thought, went well?
Yes.
I think that was a record, we were out by eight. It was pretty quick, pretty seamless, I thought.
That's very cool.
So thank all the staff for their work for that day.
Had the chance to chaperone the Frederick Band at Music at the Park last Saturday, which was great. The kids did a wonderful job, and it's always fun, especially with our band program, since it's so large, and this was just a cadet band, they filled out the stage where, you know, even the directors kind of had to like change their way just to get to the podium, which is fun to watch, and all the site kind of runners were just trying to figure out how to get chairs for everybody to sit on, that kind of stuff, which I enjoyed that part. But again, the kids did a great job, and, and as well as the directors. And on a personal note, happy birthday to Elliot, it's his 10th birthday today, so.
Happy birthday. Oh, and you're here.
We celebrated Elliot, so.
Okay. All right.
I have to read the FOIA request from November 2018 to May 2019, so bear with me. Steve Smart, November 16th, 2018, requested a certified payroll for Carlson Solar Energy for the month of October in 2018, certified payroll for Facility Solutions Group for the month of October 2018. Copy of subcontracts entered into between the following contractors, including the scope of work and dollar amounts for each contract, Performance Services and Carson Solar, Performance Services and Facility Solutions, and Performance Services and A.P. Alternatives LLC. Jody Cohen from ProPublica.org, all logs from August 1st, 2017 to the present that detail the instances where students were placed in an isolated timeout, seclusion, or any type of confinement, referred to as isolated timeout. All logs from August 1st, 2017 to the present that detail instances when physical restraint was used, the written record of each incident of isolated timeout and/or restraint that occurred between August 1st, 2017 and the present, including but not limited to the date, the beginning and ending times of the incident, the description of any relevant events leading to the incident, description of any interventions used, a description of the incident and/or student behavior that resulted in the isolated timeout, and a log of the student's behavior in isolated timeout, including a description of the restraint techniques used and any other interaction between the student and staff. So thank goodness we don't do this very often. Elizabeth Chapman, January 10th, 2019, all suspensions for last and current years, even if it has redacted student names, I'd like to have it include the offense and the, not offense, the offense and the discipline. Selena Garcia, February 26th, 2019, the contract the district has for outsourced vendor custodial services in accordance of the Freedom of Information Act. Dean Frohlig, annual renewal notice for Raptor Technologies. This renewal is paid from the general funds. NBC5, please provide me with documents showing which school buildings in your district have a storm shelter that meets the minimum requirements. And for those school buildings in Grayslake Community Consolidated District that do not have a storm shelter that meets the minimum requires, requirements described above, please provide me with a document showing how and where the children in each of those school buildings are to be sheltered in case of a tornado emergency, including the location of each shelter relative to its assigned school building. Dean Frohlig, April 1st, 2019, he requested a copy of the records destruction certificate from the Downstate Records Commission related to the installation of the reactor system. Samer S., Community Consolidated School District 46, all current direct home-to-school transportation vendor contracts and special needs transportation vendor contracts for research purposes, and that's it. And we're down to our last two school days, so the kids are ready to be out.
Next, we have any committee reports?
The Diversity Committee will meet next Wednesday, 6 o'clock, at Frederick.
And for the policy?
We have a meeting for policy coming up.
Yeah, I don't remember what the date is, but it's coming up.
We have it here, June 25th? Yes, policy meeting, June 25th. That's it.
Moving right on. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the, that you got tonight? Any, oh, sorry, go ahead. Any questions?
Brayden?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Or?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next is moving on to action items. The first one is a motion to approve the algebra and geometry curriculum.
So that was presented at the last meeting as an option for us to consider. We're remembering that it's not over the threshold, but we wanted to provide this as an opportunity for you to be aware. And so it's for a relatively small number of students and a small amount of money compared to the larger adoption that we have done in the past. We did want to make it again for just one year because there wasn't a significant discount, and then also gives us some options to look at a continued program with our other program that we use called Carnegie when it becomes available. So it's relatively small. We met with the, Amanda had the opportunity to meet with the teachers again today about it. The good thing is that we had then provided some very good information from the high school about their scope and sequence. Just recently, we were able to get that in a really good format, so they were able to spend some time today to make sure that we were connecting our programs, because those are really high school-level courses that we're offering, even though students don't get high school credit, but they do move on to the more advanced math process format. So we do want to have our students prepared as best as possible.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Nathan?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Okay, next would be a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of working cash fund earned interest to the Capital Projects Fund of CCSD 46. Would you like to explain?
So essentially, obviously, this is partially to try to help cover the solar project that we had, as well as to cover some of the other capital expenditures that we had in the last year, such as the Prairie View playground installation and the Frederick bus lot. So we're taking interest that would have normally just been assigned to the working cash fund, which, again, is usually difficult to pull money out of, and using that to try to, again, keep our fund balances secure as possible.
And some of this was the park developer donations or impact fees?
This specifically is just interest that we earned on our investments from the working
Motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Next would be a motion to approve the resolution of begging the working cash fund of CCSD 46.
So really briefly to talk about that, we have an entire sub-bank account with PMA that's entirely dedicated to the developer donations that we received for the developments around Prairie View and Park. That was a total of about $3.2 million. We did not find, in working with our auditors, where that money was deposited. So our assumption is that the majority of it was deposited into our Capital Projects account, and the rest of it was deposited into our working cash fund. So our attempt tonight is to move that money from working cash to Capital Projects to help finish paying for these solar. Previous, sort of, give an overall mile-high view of the financials of it. So we had about $3.2 million in developer donations, about $4 million in debt certificates, so that gave us a total of $7.2 million. We also had to pay about $7.3 million for the projects, so that left the district with a total cost of $89,843, which would be essentially just a spend-down or a deficit spending.
Questions? Some of the motion to approve?
Strack?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
The third one now.
The third one, a motion to approve the resolution authorizing transfer debt service fund earned interest to the Capital Projects Fund of CCSD 46.
Again, so this was just designed to try to help us cover some of the costs that we had throughout the course of the year for specifically the Frederick bus lot and some of the other small capital projects that we had this year.
Motion to approve?
Mack?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
And last but not least, motion to approve the bid for paving at GMS Prairie View and Park.
So moved? Second.
Do you have any questions? Anyone want to comment on?
So really briefly, again, as I mentioned even in the budget presentation, a short history of this is, we knew we had to do paving this year at Prairie View. Unfortunately, things happened so fast in terms of deterioration here at the middle school that we had to add that on to the summer's list of projects to do. We had the fund balance in our O&M fund to cover the expenses for it. We received an initial estimate of about $692,000 to cover the middle school and Prairie View and to repair an eastern walkway at Park. We're very happy to see that the numbers came in dramatically lower than what we had estimated it to be at. So we're pleased to put this forward to you for approval. We just also wanted to mention that with the unit prices being so low, we've also started working again with our engineers to see if there's any other patching or any other side. We were trying to be conservative, and we tried to limit the scope of some of our work. So we're looking at some other areas that maybe, hey, while you're out here, can you patch this? Can you maybe repair the whole sidewalk at Park instead of just a portion of it? So we're looking at some of that, so the final number in terms of what we'll pay at the end of the summer might be a little bit higher than this figure, but we're very happy to see that this is going to be dramatically lower than what we were thinking it was going to be.
But, so, that explains a different question.
That's a fantastic question. To be honest with you, we were a little bit later in the year, so normally, a lot of paving companies have a lot of their work lined up, so we were, I think part of it was worrying that because we had come out a little bit later in the year, that we were going to see some higher bids. But overall, the whole bid process, we saw some very competitive bidding, so I'm guessing, for whatever reason, there's a slowdown in the asphalt business in the area, and people were looking to fill in their schedules, and we happened to be a perfect project for that, so.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
No, we did that, we're done with that. We're ready to, we're done with that.
She's like six years.
No, no. All right. Miller?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
All right, now we're through unfinished business.
No, Hannah.
Don't have it.
No.
All right, so topics for future.
Actually, I had a, I had a quick question for John, or really for the administration. So we've had the new bus lot at Frederick now for a while. Has that been as successful as we hoped it would be?
It has. We're still waiting for those, once the parking lot at Frederick is striped, it'll even be better. There's usually on Fridays, not now, but on Fridays, there's an increase in the number of people there, students that are picked up, but overall, they're out of there within about eight, 10 minutes. The staff at Frederick is awesome. They come out, they get those cars moving, kids are in there, and the bus parking lot is nothing.
And the street traffic is?
Not a problem, except on Friday, sometimes there's three or four cars out there, but nothing like it was before.
And actually, one of the great things about this nasty weather that started all the way back in October is that we didn't get a chance to re-stripe our west lot, as Ellen alluded to. The great part about that is it gave us a chance to do a trial run of what the lot looked like based upon what the engineers were saying we should have about it. Because of, as Ellen said, some of the traffic started to just barely spill out on the Frederick on Fridays, we were able to make some adjustments into the plan to increase the length of double queues for that. So we're very, we're actually very hap, as weird as it sounds, we're very happy that we couldn't do the project until the spring, because it gave us a chance to make some adjustments, and I'm very confident that we'll more than be able to get all the traffic off of Frederick.
That's a good thing.
It's significantly.
Oh, yeah.
I had a question about Arbor Foods and going back into unfinished business. We had talked about having someone come out and talk to us.
Yes. It'll be in the summer.
In the summer?
Yeah, I confirmed it for the July 17th.
Great, thank you.
So, Far, I have, we're going to talk about carpeting for the library at Woodview, the five-year facility plan, and then do you want to be able to talk about the debt, long-term debt projection, the next one?
The five-year plan?
Yes.
I'm very excited.
Okay. Would it be almost six-year plan, wasn't it, 2026?
Ish.
There's a five-ish. That's all I have. Anybody have anything they'd like to add to the agenda?
You want to talk about this?
Right, the grant.
Yep.
Yep. We're going to do a tech update sometime this summer, right? Doesn't have to be next meeting, tech update. Oh, yes.
Yeah, you had to do, so you put up the-
Survey, yeah, yeah. We need the survey results, right?
Yeah.
So we'll be able to do that at the next meeting.
Is everything on till July?
Yeah, we'll do it July, whenever that-
July 17th.
I'm not wrong, am I, right?
Yeah.
That's all we have.
So now we're back to public comments. We do need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved?
LeCroy?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mack?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.